I'd like to call order the meeting of Joliet Junior College District 525. Joan, can you call a roll, please?
Broderick?
Present.
Garcia-Gian?
Present.
Mahalik?
He's on mute.
No, he actually, Joan, said he may be late.
He should be.
Oh, he did.
He's on mute.
Jake, are you on mute?
Yes.
He is. Garcia-Gian? Yes. Morales? And it should be noted that Trustee Morales is on the phone line, she's not on the video. O'Connell?
Yes, I'm here.
O'Connell?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Washington?
Here.
And Wanderlech?
Yes.
Sorry, we started a little bit late this evening, they had some technical power issues here. So we've got everybody here, welcome everybody who came, either in person or virtually. Attorney Buck, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Do we have any public comments from anyone tonight?
I do not believe so, Mr. Chairman.
And you? Moving on to 1.1.1, business reports, tax abatement request from Grundy County?
I'd like to ask Jeff Heap to provide the board with a brief update on the tax abatement. Jeff?
Yes, can you hear me? Good evening. Back at the beginning of August, taxing bodies comprised of Grundy County, the city of Morris, Morris High School, Saratoga Grade School, Morris Fire, the Morris Library District, Saratoga Township and the college were in attendance to review a tax abatement request for approximately $128 million logistics project by Procter &amp; Gamble just north of Morris, Illinois on Route 47. It's basically just west of the Morris Airport, so that's two or three miles north of Route 80 there. In the GED, Grundy Economic Development Council's scoring matrix, based on the economic, strategic, and its fiscal impacts, this project actually scores a five-year, 50% tax abatement. And what specifically contributed to this is basically approximately $49 million in equipment and technology, building, and then 205 direct hired jobs that they consider very good paying jobs.
Everybody go on mute. It's hard to hear him, can everybody go on mute?
Hold on one minute, we're having some difficulties with the...
Okay, sorry Jeff.
Background noise.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Is that better?
Yep.
So basically what contributed to it scoring a five-year, 50% abatement is the $49 million in equipment and technology going into that building, along with 205 direct hired jobs that they consider very good paying jobs for Grundy County. In addition, there was around 100 and, 100, 105 third-party jobs, but those were not factored into the application scoring process. I know included in the package should be some information on current and estimated future tax bills based on the project, I mean, it's currently farmland, total tax bill's only $3,300, our share is very minimal, you know, $128. The estimated bill based on a million square foot project and compared to other warehouses in Grundy County, the assessed value, you know, total tax bill would be in excess of $820,000, our share would be a little over $32,000, so the abatement would cost approximately $16,000 a year for five years, is the estimate. So far, the taxing bodies that have approved this abatement is Grundy County, the city of Morris, Morris High School, Saratoga Grade School, the library, the fire department, fire district voted it down, and I've not heard on Saratoga Township. In addition, Grundy Economic Development Council, any company that has an approved abatement, they do an annual audit, I guess, to make sure that the value of the equipment and the building and the jobs created that were outlined in the application, they are met, because if they're not, they have pulled back abatements in the past. I guess, are there any other questions or anything you want me to find out on this project for you guys?
Can you go back up to the top? Can you roll it back up to the top?
What do you want?
Where is their prediction date of opening?
It was in their application, they were actually, kind of there at the bottom of the second page, Jim, if you scroll down, under additional factors. Yep, stop right there. They were looking to potentially start this fall, they've not closed on the land, but I heard they possibly could in the very near future. They wouldn't be looking to complete this, fully complete it, till basically the summer of '22, that it'd be functioning.
Has Corona had any effect on them that we're aware of?
Not that we're aware of.
Have we asked?
A meeting for this was held virtually.
Okay, but have we asked about it, if there's been any setbacks because of the Coronavirus?
Not from what Nancy said. I mean, I can inquire on that, but it does not appear to be affecting this right now, the timeline.
Yeah, I still think we should have a definitive that we asked it specifically, not that just Nancy, I think from them, we should have a statement if there's been any effect from Corona, because businesses all across the board have been affected, they've got to have something that's been affected by it. That's my input, thank you.
Any other discussion? Is this an action item for a vote tonight, Dr. Mitchell?
No, Jeff, this isn't up for vote tonight, correct?
Correct. It would be at the October meeting.
Okay, so well, Trustee Broderick will get your response for you, and I'll send that, I'll share that with the board.
Thank you.
Moving on, Title III update.
Dr. Yolanda Farmer is here to provide you with a brief update as we close out our Title III grant. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, I'm loading my presentation. Thank you, so I'm so excited to report the final Title III grant update to the Board of Trustees this evening, so as a reminder, so as a reminder, in 2015, the college received a $2.1 million five-year federal grant known as Title III, strengthening our institution program. And so using Title III funds, the implementation strategy included strengthening student support services, achieving academic innovation, and enhancing communication and technology resources for our students. As a college, we are absolutely committed to this project, in fact, we implemented high-touch, high-tech initiatives to really support student success, and I'm so thankful for this grant because the initiatives implemented prepared Joliet Junior College for this remote learning and services that we provide today during this pandemic. So higher educations across the institutions, you know, are now discussing this best practice that we call guided academic pathways for our students, to really help them identify an academic and career goal in a very structured and supportive process. So I'm happy to report that Joliet Junior College continues to be a leader in this area of academic pathways, because we have already established our nine pathways at this college. I think most of you know that our pathways are reflected on our website now, coupled with testimonials, videos, to really educate, empower, and encourage our students in their educational pursuits. So I just want to remind the board, probably one of the most significant successes is really the implementation of our student portal, and so students are really utilizing the portal 100%. In fact, to date, we have about 1,600-plus students who actually view, go to the portal for support, communication, resources, and also services. So it was also very important to bring to scale our first-year experience program and revise the new student orientation. So in the past, and I believe board members, you will remember this, we offered face-to-face its new student orientation experience, and then we moved to a hybrid model, and now we are providing orientation completely online, so we were 100% prepared for the shift in light of COVID. But the most rewarding outcome of this initiative is that we are retaining more of our first-year full-time students. I see, I just want to highlight the numbers here, in terms of retention, every single year we see a significant increase in terms of our first-time full-time students, for those students who actually participate in our new student orientation and also receive ongoing advising support. So again, I can list several institutional accomplishments, and I won't read all of those to you today, but I just wanted to highlight that this has been an amazing journey for the college, and we will continue to move forward and implement these strategies, because many of the strategies are institutionalized, as we are now a guided academic pathway institution. So as we plan for the future, I do want you to know that we've conducted a very successful final visit with our external evaluators from the Development Institute, so I am 100% prepared to provide the board a very comprehensive report, to share our accomplishments and the opportunities in light of the Title III project. And then I want to stress that this grant may be coming to an end, but we are still very motivated, we are excited about what this grant has been able to provide, and we are actually exploring additional grants, very similar to Title III, and I will definitely keep you up to date as we continue with our exploration. So I just want to close with this comment, the best view comes after the hard climb, I think most of you know that it has been a heavy lift to move forward some of our Title III initiatives, but we have many, many, many successes to share, and we need to celebrate that. And so from my standpoint, the view for Joliet Junior College is extremely promising. So just really quickly, I just want to thank the board for your ongoing support, because this is year five, every single year since we've implemented the grant, I've been in front of you, we're now virtually, and I've provided up-to-date updates for all of you, but I could not do this work without the support of the project activity director, Dr. Stephanie Brown, I believe she's on this call today, including Dr. Mitchell, the cabinet members, the Title III advisory board, but mostly importantly, our faculty, staff, and our students. And if you did not know, with all of our initiatives, especially the portal redesign and also the website redesign, we received a lot of good feedback with our students, specifically student government, they provided us great feedback and insight as we moved forward with some of our initiatives. So Dr. Mitchell, I'm going to turn this back over to you, I just want to thank everyone again, and just know that you will be receiving a very comprehensive report that will highlight all of the accomplishments and the opportunities for the college. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item 1.2, moment of silence for the following individuals. Cy Ellingston, retired math faculty member and department chairman, who taught me a long, long time ago. John Speckman, father of Jim Speckman and campus police. Brenda Peoples, mother of Jabez Brown and campus police. Glenn Schulte, retired adjunct faculty member, father-in-law of Mary Jane Schulte, IT. David Brooks Jr., son of...
Latasha.
Put my glasses on. Latasha Barnes and campus police. Ronald Paul Bebar, friend of Jim Sur at IT. Errol Wilson, retired custodian, facility services, and former governor Jim Thompson, who visited our campus several times. Thank you, everyone. Next item, 1.3, recognition of special guests. In person and virtually, we're all special. And moving on, item 1.4.1, select reports, Board of Trustees approval of Disability Employment Awareness Month proclamation.
Okay, I would like to introduce student Otis Seaberry Jr., who is an associate in arts theater major at JJC. He has been at JJC since 2016 and heavily involved with campus activities with a lot of fantastic students and friends. Since his last, since this is his last semester, his plans are to move on to another four-year institute and continue his education as a theater major and hopefully pursue as an actor. If it doesn't work out, he may have to switch to radiology, but we're wishing him great success as a future actor. Otis, are you there?
Oh, yes. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation for you guys. All right, here we go. All right, so this is the proclamation for the Disability Employment Awareness Month 2020. Whereas in 1990, the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is called ADA, was signed into law. ADA is a civil rights legislation that works to increase the inclusion of people with disabilities in all aspects of community life, including employment, and whereas National Disability Awareness Month is a nationwide campaign celebrating the skills and talents workers with disabilities bring to our workplaces. And whereas the month of October is designated to reflect the important role diversity plays in the workplace. And whereas Joliet Junior College advocates respect and inclusion for every individual by demonstrating courtesy and civility in every endeavor. And whereas Joliet Junior College chooses to promote and recognize the diverse strengths of its employees and students, and to value and to celebrate the unique attributes, characteristics, and perspectives of every individual. Now therefore be resolved, that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Tinkie Key, Livingston, and Cook. State of Illinois hereby proclaims the month of October as Disability Employment Awareness Month in Illinois Community College District Number 525.
And I have a motion to accept this proclamation.
Is it a move?
We have a second.
Second.
Motion's second, Joan, would you call a roll, please? Joan?
Mahalik?
Yes.
I was muted, I'm sorry. Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
And Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
The next items, I'm going to lump them all together. Resolution honoring retiree Judith Baskin of the bookstore. Resolution honoring retiree Commander Mel Cornelius of the Police Department. Resolution honoring Patrick O'Neal, Will County Cardinal, for his years of service to the community. And I have a motion to accept these resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second, Joan, call a roll, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Next item is faculty union report, Dr. Marshink, I think he was going to join us virtually.
Yes, I am here, and I'm trying to get video, but maybe you guys don't want to see me, I understand that. And that's a shame, too, because I have my bear's colors on for, in honor of our chair and our president. Oh, there we go, can you see me now? Okay. It's nice to see you folks again, I hope you enjoy seeing me as much as I enjoy being back. I have a couple of things, first thing I want to say, and here's my camera, the retirees, I want to thank them all for all their service, and one I knew most was Mel, and Mel's just a good man, a great JJC guy, great, great JJC man, and I wish him the best going forward. As you all know, this has been a very challenging year, a very challenging, well, whole year really, when you think about it, and we're all struggling to do the best we can for our students, finding new ways to reach out to them, finding new ways to serve them, and we know there have been challenges, there will be challenges through this time, and we're all working our best to address those challenges, back with our task force and Dean's Patty Zuccarella and Lynn Mackey and several faculty members, talking about some ways that we can improve not only access, student access to us, which is something that we're striving to continue to improve, and also to keep them engaged and to serve them the best we can. I hope everybody understands that many people never taught in this format, online format, before this, for the summer, and some of them, some people didn't teach in the summer, so some people are, other than a few, several weeks in the spring, this is new for everybody. We've had great training through iCampus, and, but, it's the first time a lot of people are doing this, so you learn things as you go, and I think we're all learning that there are some things we can do to improve, and we're working towards that, and I think today's meeting was an excellent meeting, because we had a really good session of brainstorming where we came up with a lot of good ideas about how to reach out, how to keep students engaged. This is a really difficult time, we're dealing with students right now, and I think everybody knows this, I mean, they're sitting at home, they might have a brother in middle school, a sister in high school, and they're all in one room with one Wi-Fi, maybe one computer, and they're trying to educate themselves, become educated. Obviously, the younger folks have synchronous teaching, so that makes it really difficult for the older kids, but we're looking at ways that we can bring some of that also to the students. The other thing we're looking at is ways that we can prepare them better for the rigors of online instruction, I mean, suddenly you have to manage your time a whole lot better, and this came up in our meeting today, you really have to learn how to manage your time, so one of the things we discussed today was how we can help students better manage their time, and that Lynn, Dean Mackey brought that subject to the floor, and it's absolutely imperative that we teach students, some of these are 17, 18-year-old students, or first time they've ever been in a college course, and now they have five courses that they're trying to take, because they think they can take five, I can take five classes, well, it's not like taking five high school classes, and suddenly you have 15 or 20 assignments that week, and you have to learn how to manage your time, and it's a real challenge, and it's something that we're all learning, we need to do a little better at preparing students for that. And so we are going to continue that effort, we think the meeting today, I thought was excellent meeting, I thought we had some really good ideas, everybody in that room has the same goal, and that is improve the service to the student, and we're going to continue to work on those, we'll continue to take ideas, and we will bring those ideas forward to the administration, and we'll continue to work with the administration to find the answers to all of these questions. It's not going to be perfect, there are going to be things that fall through the cracks, there are going to be some students who are going to be upset because, you know, they didn't reach a faculty member on a Thursday night or something, but I can tell you this, and a lot of people don't quite understand this, because you haven't taught in this format before, and I'm not complaining, I love my job, okay, and we all love our jobs, but there are no days off in online teaching, okay? You get student emails, you get student phone calls, you get student requests, all day, every day of the week, okay? Now, yeah, you can take a Sunday off, but then you wake up Monday morning and you feel bad about it, so we are encouraging all of our faculty, reach out to your students, answer emails quickly, try to have Teams meetings with students if you can, it's difficult, I've had two Teams meetings with one class in the last, one of my classes in the last two weeks, and I had three people in it one day and two people in it another day, it's a small class, but that shows you that it's difficult for kids to get online, and one of the kids, students, you know, one of my students was working literally right beside her sister, and we were listening to both conversations, but she was on, and that was great, and I was glad to have her. But these are the challenges that we're dealing with and that we're facing, and we're encouraging all of our faculty, be available, answer those emails as quickly as you can, try to stagger the assignments so that they're not all on one day, try to make sure that if you do have an assignment due on a particular night, that you're available for that last-minute phone call or that last-minute email from a student who's going to say, "I don't know what I'm doing," which we get those, okay? So again, it's a challenge, we're rising to it, we can get better, we're going to continue to work to get better, and with the work of the task force, with the work of the chairs and the work of the administrators, we're going to improve, and we're going to get better, but I think we're doing a pretty doggone good job right now, but we're not satisfied with the status quo, we're going to keep working to make it better, and we will do that along with the administration. So that's all I have for you this evening, it's, I'm glad I was had the opportunity to speak, I didn't want to speak too long, but I probably did, but, ah, you'll forgive me here. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Next is adjunct faculty report, and I hear that Laurel doesn't have a report tonight.
Correct.
Moving on to the minutes, approval of the minutes for August 12, 2020. If there are no additions or corrections, could I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
So moved in a second, Joan, call a roll, please.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes.
Next item, 1.6, communications, any communications, Ms. Tierney?
No further communications, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, 1.7, approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second, Joan, call a roll, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes.
Next item, 1.8, approval of the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion? If not, Joan, call a roll, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes.
Uh... Consent agenda, two, two, financial report, next item, five, student development, no action. Next item, six, doing old business, board comments, anybody? Next item, 6, New and Old Business, Board Comments, anybody? Okay. Item 7, New Business, First Reading of Board Policies. Item 8, Old Business, Second Reading of Board Policies. And we've had a second reading, and that's it. Third Reading of Board Policies, all in our packet. Moving on to Reports, 9.1, Foundation, trustee Nancy, any report?
Thank you. I do not have a reporter at this time.
Thank you.
Bob, can I ask a question, though?
Yes.
Since Christie's on, and Christie, I mean, I'm sure that Nancy hasn't been at a meeting because there probably hasn't been that. Can Chris, is Christie able to give us any updates? Because I think she has more, as I was the trustee when assigned to them. I always appreciated what Christie gave because there were things I missed, because she has the internal workings of knowing what the foundation's doing, and they do so much now with regards to sustaining with us for the coronavirus thing. It would just be nice to know where they're at internally from what Christie's perspective is. Is Christie able to do that?
Yeah. You got anything to say, Christie?
Hi, yeah, I'm here. Thank you. Actually, at this point, we're getting ready for our golf outing, which is Friday. We're very excited that we have over 100 golfers. We actually had more than we had last year. We were worried about the numbers being down. Our sponsorship numbers are up from last year. We're very thankful that all the sponsors stayed with us, even though we canceled two of our events. We're well over the $850,000 mark of awarding student scholarships. We continue to give the completion scholarship away to students who are coming near the end of their time at JJC, just to get them over the hump. I'm also now giving scholarships to our Student Emergency Fund. We've been able to help quite a few students with that. I just approved another $2,000 of food cards to go to our students through Student Emergency, and another $1,000 worth of gas cards. We financed another 30 laptops for our loaner book, our loaner laptop program, and we're working on getting students their hotspots. We actually are in the process of endowing, putting out an annual appeal for our Tribute to Men of Color scholarship. We want to get that endowed. Right now, it's at 7,000, and we want to get it to the $30,000 level. So, we've identified 2,000 possible donors to receive that appeal. We also did a quick appeal for Student Emergency that brought in money. Our Student Emergency Fund, right now, the balance as of this week was 151,000. So, we're very pleased with the employees and the people in the community that are giving to Student Emergency. And we're working on our year-end appeal, and we're working on how the holiday party for the college is going to look different, that those baskets that we normally do for the holidays. Everyone has agreed to do them again, and we're going to do an online auction because the funds from that holiday basket party that we do actually brings all the funds for the president's scholarship. And Dr. Mitchell gives significantly to that scholarship, and then we match that with the sales from the tickets from the baskets. And we give quite a bit, probably $5,000, $6,000 a year away to non-traditional age students for the president's scholarship. So, my team has been busy. We're in 25%, you know, my team is in every day, and we just set up, you know, I think through COVID, people are becoming very aware of their possible, you know, their mortality, and they're looking at their wills, last will and testament. And I've worked with four donors to put JJC in their will. So, that's good for us. You never know when that is going to come, but it's great that they reach out and want the language and the information to be able to give the college money when they do pass. So, this past year, we raised $1.2 million, and, you know, the last four months was COVID. And so, the fact that we were still able to raise $1.2 million says a lot about our employees and about the donors that support the college. We're down 2,000 from last year because last year, Bill Johnson had passed, and we got, or 2 million, we're down 2 million from his gift from last year. He passed. And then, the rest of his estate gift, we should get in the next six months. But I'm happy to say that the foundation's being very reactive to all the needs of the students. I hear daily from Dr. Angie Kason, our Dean of Student Success. I hear from Dr. Amy Gray. We just awarded $50,000 for Awards for Excellence, a lot of really innovative equipment that will help our faculty online. And we just completed our yearly audit. We got a clean audit, and that's done by Orma Rogers Duran, and that's all finished. So, that's the update for the foundation, unless you have any questions.
Thanks, Christie.
Thank you.
Next item, ICCTA rep, Maureen, have anything?
Yeah, this Friday, the 11th and the 12th, is the ICCTA quarterly meeting. And then, I don't know if you guys, the trustees are aware of it, but since August 10th to October 10th, they have been doing a 2020 New Trustee Governance Leadership Institute online for you to learn. So, Betty, if you want to, and I know you're new, if you get the app, the ACCT app, and then it will show you all the classes, and you'll be able to do the classes online. It's a virtual class to learn all the governance rules of what we do as trustees, which is kind of a good, you know, background and foundation for us. And then, October 5th to October 8th is our ACCT Leadership Congress Virtual Experience, first time we've ever done this. And I don't know how many of you are signed, but if we do have more signed, if we go more, if we have six people, then we cut our costs down significantly. If we have seven to 10 people, it's even more significant. And since we don't have to travel, and we can sit and watch, on your ACCT app, you will see all of the detailed classes that you can get into, as long as you have paid and you're online. You can go through those classes and listen to what's going on, and it's very informational. They've got the prepared agenda up already. So, if there's any changes, they'll be making that within the next week or so. But for the most part, they're pretty concrete on what they're doing. Our fellow community colleges will be doing presentations. So, it's always good to listen to them and find out what they're doing, because anytime we go to the convention, it's always wonderful learning what other colleges are doing. And yet, we know that JJC is still the beginner, the one that always shows them how things are done, too. But it's always good to learn, too, of what they are doing in their neck of the woods, too. But I know I'm planning on being on virtual. I think Bob is, too. Bob and I have to be signed up as delegates to vote, so there is going to be delegation voting still going on. So, it's going to be acting as if we're actually there, but we're going to be virtual. It's going to be a different experience, but I don't think any of us want to be in downtown Chicago at this point in time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, both classes, they're during the day, right?
I think so. Well, I think they are, but hold on. Let me go back and look for you. So, hold on a minute.
While you're looking, Maureen, can you put trustee Morales down for that meeting also, please, or send me the information?
For what? Pardon me, I didn't hear you.
I said, while you're checking, can you include me in the meeting also so that I can participate and watch? Or send me the information and I can register?
For the one that's coming up this Saturday, or for the one that's going to be?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. I am waiting for them to send me the information because it's going to be basically virtual, too.
For both, please.
Okay.
I have to say, I track the times, and I teach during the day.
Yeah, and I'm looking at it right now. If you register, they have it, and they have it laid out for you to look at. It's in days. It doesn't give me the times that I'm looking at. But it's like, they have classes 11 to 11:05, 11:05 to 12:15, 12:30 to 1:30. And they go into Day Two, which is basically anywhere from 11 until about 1:30, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, Betty.
Yeah, I'm doing remote learning, so I'm teaching during the day until 2:30.
Okay.
And 30 to 2:30.
Yeah, I just thought I'd offer it so you were aware of it, so that you know it's out there.
I appreciate it. Thanks. Joan had sent me the information, and I had replied to her that I would not be available because school started.
No problem, no problem.
Okay, thanks for the info, Bob.
No problem. And Alicia, I'll get you that information.
Okay, moving on. Student trustee, is Dante with us tonight?
He is not, but Dr. Farmer would like to just introduce the, Ian, correct?
That's correct, Dr. Mitchell. So, this evening, board, I have the pleasure of introducing Ian Wilkinson. Ian is a graduate from Seneca High School. Throughout high school, he was extremely active in just about every club offered, along with being a three-sport athlete, as well as graduating at the top of his class. He was captain of the track team, president of the science club, president of their Future Farmers of America chapter, and oversaw 13 other FFA chapters in the area as a reporter. Since attending Joliet Junior College, he is studying to become an electrical engineer with a minor in act business. He is looking forward to the student trustee position to support his peers and to strengthen his leadership and networking skills. We will officially see Ian during the October board meeting, but I wanted to provide the board a formal introduction today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. It's nice to see somebody who takes after me. Moving on, 9.4, the Buildings and Grounds Committee. We had a short meeting this afternoon. I sat in with Dr. Mitchell. We had an upcoming bid status from Janice, a project status report from Rick Lyman, the updates on city center campus, police station, respiratory therapy and a new student bridge, and Workday. Next building and grounds meeting is October 14, 2020, and it was very short and sweet. Any comments, Dr. Mitchell?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't able to attend. I had some, some snap, there were some closing issues on the new house, so.
It's okay. We covered for you, Jake.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Bob.
Okay, next item, 9.4, President's Report. Do we have anything?
The only thing I'd like to share is that at the workshop I mentioned to the board, a possibility of a special board meeting. So, I am going to ask if you're available for Wednesday, September 30. It's the last Wednesday of the month. It will just be a very brief special meeting. It can be completely virtual for the purpose of appointment of potentially two, possibly three, leadership positions, in addition to seeking your approval and support to waive the online course fee for students for the spring semester. Those will be the only items.
9.6, Chairman's Report, have no report tonight. Item 9.7 and 9.8, Executive Session, we have no need for executive session. So, if I could have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And we have a second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.